Not to be determined, but they want us to put this in writing. I'm out in the community a lot. And the comments that I'm hearing. And what I'm reading here. This is too vague. We don't, we don't, hasn't been determined who owns the road. It sits on our watershed. We don't know if. The sale of gas is included. Or the storage in this figure. How can, it's almost like you're putting the cart before the horse here. Little stores. They don't own the land.
They would be leased. Yeah, it'd be like a condo.
Oh, and we have two hundred and some more condos. That were supposed to be done after the anchor store. Why are they, why is this commission sitting here? Still not knowing all the information. Presented so we can all make an intelligent decision. It's bits and pieces, well, I don't know, well, that hasn't been determined.
The town, if I could, I guess on terms of the, the road, we'll clarify that, from East Society Road. Across the Patagansett to, to Flanders. There's gonna be a point in which the town will own just about all of that, up until about the Costco. And then where the highway interchange, when the highway ramps come in, more than likely, the state of Connecticut, because the town can't own the ramps, nor can Costco. The state of Connecticut will own the highway ramps and they'll own the portion of road from the, the highway ramps to the service road out to one sixty-one, and they will be the ones to maintain that. That is the plan in front of DOT presently. Could it change? It may.
So there, we're gonna have more traffic. More potential for accident spills. Then we're gonna have this big box store, which we don't know yet if. If the square footage and the storage is included, the other road.
I guess my question is how important is that in determining whether or not? The sale of fuel or the storage of outdoor items, those are, what I feel are zoning matters that the zoning commission has to actually act on. And make those determinations. We're being asked is whether or not the defin, this definition is consistent with the plan of development. So if I, you know, I, I don't wanna get too far off the mark with.
Right, but you know what?
Versus what.
We're all taxpayers here. And the potential is dangerous, too many unknown.
Duly noted, and I think the zoning commission is well aware. That the site sits over the town's aquifer and that there is a down, potential downstream effect. Um, you know, we, several, about a year or so ago, we, we made our comments to the zoning commission when they repealed. The, uh, help me, I can't read from here, but the, the primary and secondary recharge areas. So that. I, you know, I'm. I, I completely understand your position.
I don't know how we can make any decision without all the facts.
The only thing they're really asking for is a definition, though, we're not deciding on a specific Costco item, that's like a different application, I think. What they're, what they're asking for here is strictly a definition of what a box store would be. I mean, yes, there is a Costco, but that's not what they're asking for here.
Right. But it says right up there. Gateway District Anchor Store.
Yeah, but we don't know if it's Costco, we don't know what store could go in there.
It could be a Lowe's, it could be a Home Depot, it could be a Walmart.
Son.
But all of that is really, all of that, the planning department's issue, is it just not, just words that we're, we're just trying to figure out whether or not it would, is the right thing or not the right thing, instead of saying inconsistent or consistent, making it just a better word.
I mean, in, in my opinion.
I think we're belaboring this a little, and I know that there's great points here. I do know that, but, you know, and things to be geared down a little bit and to secure, I, I mean, especially Jones' point with the, the fuel, that is definitely the flag. But, I mean, is that really up to us? I'm, I'm just asking a question.
Again, in terms of whether or not the use is permissible, that'll be the zone question.
Is that the only thing that we have to think about? I mean, like zoning does everything else.
Well, you, you, you get to reflect on whether or not the proposed reg changes are consistent with the P O C D, and in which case, um, you know, when, in terms of the master development plan. Uh, there is a public hearing process that obviously the applicant has gone through.
Right.
Um, and part of that. That eleven A point nine five, under approval criteria, the adoption of a master development plan shall require a public hearing, et cetera. And the commission shall consider the following criteria in determining whether to adopt the proposed M D P, and then one, two. The first one, consistency with the plan of conservation and development. Consistency with the goal of the Gateway Plan Development District to broaden the town's tax base while providing coordinated development. So these findings of consistency with specific criteria. You know, we, we've adopted a zone, so I think all they're asking for here is, they wanna define what would an anchor store be.
I know, I understand exactly that.
So. This is what they're saying an anchor store would be, in my, and again, in my opinion, that I don't necessarily think that the applicant even needed to apply for this to have fuel sales in. The development district, because it's retail sales.
One of the, one of the things that I'm thinking about here as related to maybe our conservation plan or whatever, they have a, a statement here that says. Nor compliance with any separation distances that might fall under some of your water questions, also, like, you know, that somebody brought up gravel driveways or, uh, you know. They, they're, they're asking here of separation dis- distances, I could see them, like, paving the whole lot over, over the whole, whatever, and you wouldn't have any of your safeguards maybe, or maybe not.
Yeah, I, I.
Is there any effect, 'cause I, this right.
That, that would go back to something like, is my package store a hundred feet from a school? I don't, would no longer have to comply with something like that. Because, and I think.
That we don't like, or we are questioning this statement that says nor compliance with any separation distances, maybe that might be another thing we could ask if. We could take out or change to soften a little bit.
To suggest.
They're asking.
Yeah.
That, you know, they're saying if, if they shouldn't be forced to follow any of the other rules regarding the separation of the, uh, businesses.
I mean, I, I think, as I read that, I think that, that section is a little redundant, because you've already asked. That the store shall, shall not require individual conformance with each category slash service, so that. You know, and maybe that's in, as it relates to parking.
I was just trying to come up with something that.
But. And I think this section, they're just saying, okay, we won't have to meet separation distances that two individual uses might have. Um, I think automotive, actually, is it fuel cells? It might be fuel cells, have to have separation distances between gas stations. I mean, I don't know if there's anything quirky in the zoning regs like that, I suspect that there is, and that's why they're using that language. I mean, I can speak to the, the alcoholic, the sale of alcoholic beverages, because we just dealt with that a few months back. And concern for a, an establishment, a food. Retail establishment, um, within proximity to a church. That's what we were, we were dealing with, and, um, so that, let's say someone wants to locate a, a church in the Gateway District. That little caveat would say, hey, I can still sell alcoholic beverages.
Okay, I get it.
Uh, I just wanna point something out for Brooke, um, the anchor store, the question of the square footage. I recommend we use the hundred forty thousand square feet that is in, uh, the master development plan, so the, the comment would read. Uh, is the exterior motor vehicle fuel sales or storage of bulky nature items? Is that included in the hundred and forty thousand square feet? Because I could see them, uh, needing to clarify that. Does that make sense to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
If, if they're gonna put a limit on it that no more than one forty, um, we would wanna know if that includes what could be expansive exterior space, you know? Uh, just by way of review, Brooke, could you just read back where we're, the motion comments so far, where we're at?
Um, okay, let's see, well, for number one, the strike, the not limited, under definition. And then number two is selling fuel in the watershed. Um, number three, the location and, um, outside storage space, the exterior and the hundred and forty thousand square feet, is it included in that?
Right, and that was the, um, motor vehicle sales as well as the.
Storage.
Bulky nature, storage space.
Yeah, just have a jump ball.
Yep. Uh, how do commission members feel so far, is there, do we need to add another point, comment? I think it's, it's a tricky one, because where it isn't being redundant, it's being vague, right? As Mr. Geishell pointed out, we already have retail use, this may be redundant, everything. Um, as Joan pointed out, and Mr. Lynch pointed out. By, by including language that says not limited to, it really gets our imaginations cooking, and we have to, when we have an obligation to think of the worst-case scenario, the law of unintended consequences, et cetera, so.
And I, and I think, you know, reading that is that they're, they're using that language, so in case they miss something, and that's why I, I go back to the definition of just a retail store.
Right. But in the spirit of this whole gateway thing, it, it's such a unique. Method of land use. It proclaims to be a planned development district. And the best-laid plans of mice and men. And we're hoping that this thing, and, and, and again, the first sentence of the purpose is to coordinate the development. And provide safeguards so that an early development does not jeopardize maximum building. The project right now, it appears to be at a crossroads, we'd like to see full buildout, I think the developer wants to see full buildout, so.
Right.
Getting regulations clear.
Well, in order to. Um, see full bolt buildout, as I understand it, is that the prospective tenant of the site, which I think we all know is Costco. They want a surety that they can locate and, and conduct their business on that, that site. Um, what the, the developers that have done the residential piece, that own this land, have indicated to us is that they're working to, to acquire other tenants for the remainder. Of the development, the full buildout. So it's in the works, it's just getting there, and their feeling is that by getting and landing the Costco, the anchor store, it will spur. Other retail. Call them, uh.
Junior box stores.
Well, junior box stores, as well as the. Other retail stores, I guess, I'm thinking co- commercial, uh, corporate type. Stores.
Um, the, the only other element, aspect of this that I would, um, mention before we try to get a motion cobbled together would be, uh, walkability. There's been, uh, varying degrees of walkability to the Gateway District. Flanders itself has a, um, moderate level of walkability, I'd say it's probably not very walkable, especially as compared to Niantic. Um, anchor store implies it's anchoring something. As I see this, there's no walkability in it, it's all, um, parking.
Yeah, and I think the, the argument there is an anchor, you know, a Costco in and of itself, you, you go there, you're, you're not gonna walk out of there with a, you know, one-pound bag of. Two-pound pack of potatoes, you're gonna go out with bulk items, and so it, it, it is. You know, most likely, uh, it drives. It, 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 it drives a necessity for a car. Um, in terms of walkability, uh, in working with the developer. You know, and it, what we're suggesting is that. There are people who will be using bikes, and there are going to be other retail stores eventually as part of that master plan, that people are gonna wanna access. So whether they're walking down Flanders Road or biking down Flanders Road, they're gonna wanna get into this site and, and maybe stop for a coffee somewhere. Whatever it may be, so.
So is any, are any of the comments about walkability within the scope of the definition of an anchor store, or should we just leave that completely out of it?
I, frankly, I think that's a, a separate.
I would leave.
Issue, it's not really.
I wouldn't put that in.
I, I just wanted to, you know, what is the anchor? It's anchor because it's huge.
Yeah.
And otherwise, there's nothing, there's nothing really new here about this thing.
Right.
That's what makes it the anchor.
The, the crazy thing is, though, is they've already used the term anchor store, and we just never had a definition for it.
What it is.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
And that, yeah.
Are there any other, uh, comments that we'd like to include in our motion? Very well.
That was a separate question.
Uh, very well, uh, I'm looking to hear a motion.
All right, I make a motion to, pursuant to section three dash, eight dash, three dash A of the Connecticut general statutes. I hereby move that the planning commission of the town of East Line exercises its authority. And having reviewed the proposal for a text amendment referred above, finds and therefore proposal consistent with the objectives. Two point one and two point two of the two thousand nine Plan of Conservation and Development. As amendment, as amended, based on the findings in the moratorium from Gary A. Geishell the second. Director of Planning to the East Line Planning Commission dated February twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen. All right, and then we're gonna add the one and the two with the three.
Yeah, you can even read that.
Right?
You can read the highlighted.
All right, in addition, should express the following relevant comments and/or recommendations.
Which Brooke has.
Yours are two, right? Three, okay. With three recommendations.
Could you maybe repeat them back for the commission?
Uh, to strike not limited to from the de- definition. Um, essentially open to that for everything, uh, two, uh, selling fuel in the watershed. Three, the location, outside storage space, um, the exterior is that included in the hundred and forty thousand square feet.
Great, and that's outdoor storage space and the fuel sales.
Right. Thank you.
And the definition, you recommended to change the definition from a hundred thousand to a hundred and forty thousand?
Yes, I think she got that.
Yeah, a hundred and forty thousand.
Yep. Uh, I've heard the motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Lynch, is there further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I do have one comment on the motion. Um, I'd just like to clarify, I believe that was based on the findings found in the memorandum, not moratorium.
Oh, oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Where are we starting even?
Just. For the record and clarification.
Oh, just for the record, thank you.
I'll let it go.
Oh, you did not.
So item one was, 'cause I'm gonna have to type this up, that's why.
Okay.
So item one, uh, was the concern with motor vehicle fuel sales.
Number one was the expression not limited to.
Okay, to. To strike. Do we just sugge, okay. And that was for a specific reason?
Because it opens it up to, it's too much, too.
It's too big.
Okay, number two was the motor, my motor vehicle fuel cells?
Yep.
Um, and whether or not it's included in the net floor area?
Uh, two was the presence of hazardous fuels in, in the watershed, as.
And that was.
As a separate from the aquifer protection area, it's a general comment that this would bring a gas station into the watershed.
General concern?
Yep, and then the third one would be, um. With respect to the hundred and forty thousand square feet, is that including exterior tractor bulky storage things and exterior fuel pumps and, uh.
So that's number three, that includes the outdoor storage of, of.
Yep, we're looking for clarification that all of those are involved in the one forty, because if they were to, for instance, triple the size of those uses. Uh, they might maintain that, look, the, you know, we were just talking about the, the air-conditioned space, it's the hundred forty, and. Uh, that could make a difference, because the scale of this is already impressive, and the scale of, uh, those accessory uses are of concern to the commission.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Hello, is it in favor, Sal?
Hi.
Unanimous, thank you all for your hard work on that, good one.
Can I ask a question, which is sort of in here? It, I don't need an answer tonight, it's just. In Denver years ago, they passed a law, when you have so much blacktop, you have to have so much green or a tree space above it. Is there anything like that that exists in this community?
Um, I don't believe there's any specific requirements for a, a, like a one-to-one or one-to-two ratio of green, green to, uh, impervious or asphalt. Okay.
Thank you.
And, and that was a good question, um. Brings us through municipal referrals, through a business, which we're gonna skip, uh, unless there's an objection. Regarding reports, as chairman, I have a couple of comments I'd like to make, uh, first and foremost. Uh, I attended the joint land use study technical committee, as well as the public meeting that they, they held. Uh, that was at the National Guard Camp, uh, Camp Niantic. Um, the attendance of the technical committee and the public meeting were very low. Uh, I was the only elected representative at the technical committee, and the public meeting, uh, only drew about four people. It's an important land use study as it examines the relationship of the military to posts in Camp Niantic, as well as Stone's Ranch. Uh, the relationship of that use to that of our town, um, and. I would, uh, encourage everybody to take an interest in it, there will be another public meeting, uh, in the summer when they're going to present, I believe, uh, which Mr. Geishell will keep us posted on. Um, a few things that came up. First was, uh, just a general overview of why the military is there and what their interest is. It was explained to me by one of the brass that a lot of money has been invested in Camp Niantic recently, and they intend to maximize their usability of it over a lifetime of those buildings, so. My comment was the, the land is valuable, and it would be helpful to know if they ever saw themselves, uh, finding a better home. Or anything like that, which they said was really out of the question, very unlikely. It's of, it's of, um, interest to the town, because the, the parcels, uh. Gary and I were looking at it as something like assessed at, you know, tens of millions of dollars.
Approximately twenty-three.
It's a twenty-three million dollar camp, it's, uh, not, uh.
Well, it's more than that, it's the assessed value.
Sorry, correct, so it's a very valuable piece of waterfront property that the army's using. I asked the two majors if, uh, was it Colonel and Major? What about, what unique aspect of that land was, uh, important to their mission? And the response was that it's really nothing, they're using classrooms and, um, dormitories at the post. They do drill, but, um, they have no capacity at Stone's Ranch, therefore, this is what, um, is, it, um, it's. Capacity is now, further, uh, the town is compensated for not being able to tax the land through the pilot program, which stands for Payment in Lieu Taxes. Uh, the total sum of the pilot program payments to our town, which accounts for all the land we can't tax. This includes the prison, this includes the state park of Rocky Knack, this includes the state forest in Niantic, this includes both military posts. Uh, I believe the line item is about nine hundred thousand dollars a year.
I thought it was, I thought it was just over one million.
It's not just the, the guard.
No, that's correct, it's, it's an aggregate of all the things we can't tax, prison, I forgot the prison, all of those things, the taxes, that the payment in lieu of taxes amounts to something like a million dollars. The obvious trade-off would be if any, if the, if the, if a parcel of land such as Camp Niantic was to be taxable to us, that. That parcel alone would amount to millions of dollars of tax revenue. So it was a fun discussion to have with the military, um, long and short of it is, they, they.
They, they, yeah, realistically, they don't have any intent of leaving, but with that said, on the other side of the coin is to, what, what is the economic benefit of their presence? Um, and I, it's part of this study that is being looked at, uh, through D E C D. And as soon as the, uh. General Martin gives concurrence with Bob Ross from the State Department of Military Affairs, that he can release that document, it'll become part of the study, so. We then will be able to look at those numbers and, and have further discussion as to whether or not, you know, good, bad, or otherwise.
And with respect to the public, uh, meeting that was conducted, uh. I was not satisfied with their explanation and their data regarding sound in Stone's Ranch, they do conduct training there, there is sound that moves off the property. I wanted their, um, a snapshot of what is going on right now, how much noise are they making, how many times the helicopters land, what's the tempo of activity? Um, they wouldn't, they didn't have any of that data, and most importantly, they set the expectation that anything can happen. So, uh, I think we should have our eyes open, this is not a use exclusive to the Connecticut Guard.
Really?
Other state guards have reciprocity and move in and out. So we potentially could see the tempo of use at Stone's Ranch increase as a result of Massachusetts. Or Pennsylvania eliminating a military base or something of that effect, their training might end up taking place in Connecticut, is that clear?
Potentially, and some of it already does.
Indeed, right now, this is happening constantly.
And, and part of the, the mission is that, um, or what they've. Said their, you know, maybe they, they sat back and they took a look at their missions, that we need to kinda change things as time moves forward, and they've now got the, what they call the R T I, or Regional Training Institute. Regional training, so that encompasses almost all of New England.
The state police are in there all the time.
All the time.
Now, do they have to, um, disclose everything, or is a lot of it classified, because?
There, for, for nine-one-one purposes, I believe some of it is classified, there's a lot of information that they've made public.
They've, they've already posted buoys in the sound, and they're looking to create a buffer, which was explained to me as a requirement of the Department of Defense, that these buffers be established. Uh, my questions to them were, have you ever had a reason? Has anyone ever threatened Bates? Can you tell me anything? And it was. They, they said.
Or their activity on Bates, I'm sure, is very classified.
Having, having grown up in the military, my father was a retired Colonel. That entrance is extremely secure, I mean, trying to get through that. Mess out there, 'cause I went to some, uh, function there for Bill, and I don't remember what it was, but trying that, trust me, that's guarded. It is.
Of substance is the, is the shoreline?
Yeah, I know.
That the army doesn't really watch, and, and what they wanna do is put cameras and enhanced perimeter stuff, which, I mean, it's their cost.
What I don't know, what happens is, 'cause they go down. The, uh, what's the road before the camp?
Pine Grove?
Pine Grove.
Yeah.
And they got the back entrance, I don't know what goes in there.
Well, I wanted to-
I am suspicious of it, but.
Uh, one, one other anecdote from the, from the discussions that we had was, uh, after we all spent so much time talking about the weddings and the farm events, um, one of the comments from the, uh, our consultant, Matrix Group, was that, uh, Yale had complained to her that the weddings they're having on Yale property have been disrupted by National Guard helicopters. To which I replied, what weddings? So in this, in the three hours we sat here scratching our heads about how would people do weddings in town? It appears Yale is conducting these kinds of weddings. This use is happening. They are charging for it. Cause her comment was they, they complained, this is, and it's, you know, we, we offer this property for a lot of money.
Complaint that they received, yeah, we get a lot of money for weddings and-
Something like while they were doing the vows, a chopper came through. So, um, I just want, I, I mean, I, I offer that just to balance everybody's understanding of what goes on in town. I, I'm not sure if it's legal to be doing the weddings the way they're doing it, or if it's prohibited or permitted or whatnot, but, um, that Yale property is right up the road from the property we looked at, so it's possible.
I, I believe Mr. Mahal said they can't do that. They need a permit.
Yeah, we didn't think that they could do that, but-
But what was interesting though is that this is the first, of our knowledge that, uh, Yale was conducting weddings, so I-
So on that topic, Mr. Geisler, could we get all the, all of the documents, um, Matrix has of who they've talked to? Cause they did extensive reach out and how are we doing and they, they connected with Yale and there was a document of, uh, their conversation. Is that anything that we would have access to or?
Um, yeah, we, we would, uh, I, I-
Will that be issued in their report or as an appendix or anything like that?
I believe that would be issued in the report. I want to say it's in one of those first few chapters.
Okay.
I am, I'm gonna piggyback on Brian's comment about why we were here the three and a half hours the last time zoning meeting. When the attorney that was, he got up to speak, um, in reference to the twelve actual bed and breakfasts that they were discussing that this is what they wanted, the bottom line was, they only did that so this way they can get the definition in writing on the books that it would be, um, the difference between bedrooms of the bed and bath and, and a motel unit. That was how they classified it, but they never, ever thought of anything more than seven bedrooms. That was their limit.
But what was interesting is in the newspaper-
Three hours, seven bedrooms. That was it.
The newspaper said six. The owner-
They have five.
No, they're building across at the, in the ice house.
In the ice house?
No, no, I am, no, but that was, we, we were here for that many hours.
Right, no, I know.
And it was just like this little window of that, that's all we wanted. I wanted to choke him.
Well, thank you for your restraint.
I left.
I did.
I left after a certain comment.
Well, it, it, to me, it was, it was, it illustrates to me how we can all put our heads together and try to think about, you know, the impact of these regulations. Uh, and then come to find just by talking to people or, or doing further research, um, there's a lot of things transpiring in town that we don't have firearms around completely. And, uh-